We're now ready to move directly into council time following a 9:00 AM work session on stream health and a report on that stream health. Very interesting and well done. As we look at the agenda today, it is Wednesday, April 20, and we begin with old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of April 13?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve with one question. I think you were going to talk to Council Lance about one of the vacancies on, I mean, it's annotated in the minutes.
Yes, I did talk to her and it was a negative. So we will be covering that with the fifth counselor as soon as that individual is appointed, assuming that that occurs before we have our retreat.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. They are passed. And I just wanted to say I really appreciated how these minutes were reported for the reason that Councilor Med Vigi was just able to follow up on something in those minutes. And I use them in the same way and just wanted to say that I appreciate that. Next, we turn to 1.2, an ARPA internal funding update. Kathleen?
Good morning, counsel. Laura Young from the Otters Office is on this morning. As stated earlier, when the council provided some funding for small ARPA requests internally, we would provide an update to the council on what those requests have been. And the first quarter reports have just been submitted. So I would ask Laura Young to just provide a summary to the council on what we've used those funds for.
Kathleen, good morning, counsel. This quarter, for quarter one, we have three requests moving forward for the ARPA small projects request. The first request, and there are two requests from Information Technology for Community Development, small projects requests. The first is $13,491 for funding for laptop stocking stations and upgraded Adobe Pro within community development, development engineering. The second is a request from Information Technology Community Development for $12,141 for laptop stocking stations within community development land use review. And the third request is for the Children's Justice Center for a one FTE victim advocate position for 2022. And the total funding for the 2022 portion of this request is $69,500, and there will be an additional request in 2023 following up with an additional project position request in 2023, which is not currently a portion of this request. So the total amount of requests for the current quarter is $94,632.
Would you please repeat that number, Laura? It's 94,000?
Yes, $94,632.
Thank you.
Yes, of course.
And if I can add just really quick, I don't have the report to Laura yet, but there was a few thousand dollars also to help fix our audio in the hearing room to allow for hybrid meetings. So that will also be included in the ARPA funding request.
How much was budgeted, Kathleen, again, for the internal funding?
I believe it was 1 million, but Mark or Laura, can you please confirm that?
Yes, it's 1 million for the year of 2022.
And is there a plan then for moving to accept more applications?
Yes, the Otters Office.
I'm sorry, Kathleen, go ahead.
No, my apologies. Go ahead, Laura. Thank you.
Yes, the plan is to work with the Budget Office to submit applications quarterly for the small projects funds. If the projects requested exceed the bounds of the small projects fund, they'll be submitted with a full settlement.
Very good. Questions from council? Well, thank you for the update.
You.
Appreciate it, Laura and Kathleen, of course. So we now move to the Arts Commission MOU. I don't know who is presenting this, perhaps Lindsey?
Yes, good morning. Excuse me. So the Arts Commission MOU, we discussed this previously in council time. Since then, I know the PA's office has looked at this and made some modifications to it. Just for clarification and streamlining the agreement, so just for reference, this is the MOU that would allow the Arts Commission to partner with a 501(c)(3), the Columbia Arts Network, or CAM, in order to handle their deposits and expenditures from the Arts Commission, which they currently can't do in their current form. So they're requesting that the county approve this. And so this is planned to go on as a separate business item on the May 3 hearing date, but wanted to see if you had any questions before then.
Counsel, questions? No? If you would look at the third whereas, please. I wondered if you would just expand a little bit on that for us, please.
In terms of the sufficient staff resources to adequately support the Arts Commission, so this is one, this is the kind of the crux of the issue, that they don't have, they don't have the ability in terms of the, to accept the deposits and make the expenditures. They could, in theory, hire staff, but it's not really their model to do so. And to my knowledge, I don't know of any county boards or commissions that have their own hired staff. I could be wrong, but I don't know.
So the majority of our boards, commissions do not have a full-time staff. We do have one for the Board of Equalization that has a full-time staff member that supports them and sometimes a half-staff member, but the majority of the rest of them may just provide, I think Commission on Aging has limited resources from staff, but most of them do not have a county staff assigned to them.
So it's maybe not as much due to monetary constraints as it's tradition for this to be the case, that the commissions don't have their own staff?
Correct, yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's not monetary constraints coming from the county. So saying Clark County due to monetary constraints doesn't have the staff resources. It's, I think, you know, if we had a ton more, would we staff? I don't know. We can certainly modify this whereas if it's a concern. It's not crucial for the content of the MOU.
Yeah, I got a little bit of the wrong impression, I think, by that phrase, "due to monetary constraints." So maybe just the omission of that.
We can do that.
My next question was, there are quite a few references to the commissioners. And which group of commissioners is that?
This is referring to the Arts Commission commissioners.
Okay, so that's probably spelled out somewhere. I just missed it. But if it isn't specified, that would be a good parenthetical reference there. And it may be, I just missed it if it is. And could we look at Roman numeral 2C? What additional venues and services would likely be made available?
I think the intent of this language is to leave that option in terms of the county venues, because she'll make available county venues and services. It just leaves forth the option. Right now, for example, they utilize the sixth floor gallery. So there along the wall, as you come off the front elevators and you walk back towards the council room, that's one of the county venues that they use for displays of artwork. So I think it leaves open the option in the future, should there be additions or alternatives.
That's maybe less clear on services, but it's a wonderful addition for venues, that's for sure. Are there other questions, comments about what you read here? Anything? Councilor Med Vigi?
Chair, I want to thank Lindsey and everyone else that participated in moving this along. I know they were increasingly getting frustrated by not having this in place. So I'm hoping we can move it forward.
When is this on our agenda, Lindsey?
The May 3, as a separate business item, May 3 meeting.
Great. Gosh, May 3 is not that far off. Anything else, counsel? Okay, thank you, Lindsey. So the public safety sales tax and jail update. Kathleen Otto.
Thank you.
My apologies, I hit the wrong button. So we had a lot of feedback in here. Okay, so this conversation is going to be in a couple different parts. The first part, I want to talk about the jail. The second part will be one-time funding options. And then the third part will be ongoing funding options for council's conversation today. For the jail, as I mentioned before to the council, we are looking at bringing together a smaller group of constituents with specific areas of expertise to review all the work that has been done previously in jail studies, including the CFAC. And I believe there's a couple other studies in the past decade. As I was reviewing all of that information myself in preparation to help facilitate those meetings in a expedited manner, so I was looking at data, what decision points need to be made, I started getting, asking myself some questions, which led me to start asking questions of our key stakeholders here in the county. And so with that said, I did present this information, part of it, to the Law and Justice Committee last week for their consideration, received some feedback. And then now I would like to share this data with you as well. I am providing, or, sorry, I have a tickle, drafting a language to summarize all this information to be shared as well, both publicly and with our Law and Justice community members. So in this CFAC report, it did say by the year 2050, the recommended capacity for jail beds is about 850 to 880 beds. As I started looking at the data, our current main jail, there is currently 490 beds available. In the CFAC report, it did say that H pod was closed due to insufficient operating funds. I did ask, what is that? Is it just funding for operations? And what it was was due to staffing. If that was open, that would increase the bed capacity by 54 beds, increasing the main jail up to 544 beds. Our Jail Works Center, which is down the road here a couple miles, currently has 100 beds. These are situated differently in that they're, it's more dormitory style in three or four different areas. This facility would have to be hardened on the outside with a barrier so to keep the population safe internally as well as externally. And we may need to do some remodeling there as well. That facility has not been used since COVID, as that did house the lower-risk population that, in which the decision was from Law and Justice to not house those individuals during COVID. Juvenile detention facility. So I learned that there is a portion of the juvenile detention facility that is closed. This is about 43 beds. Their open space that they're using is 83 beds. The closed port, and I'll tell you, historically, they did believe that over the years they would have to increase bed spaces more as the population increased. But they have really looked at evidence-based practices in juvenile to look at alternatives to incarceration, which have been successful. So the number of juveniles who are being housed in the detention facility has significantly decreased. I don't know the number today, but as of two weeks ago, we had three juveniles. So after talking with their administrator and our facilities manager, I learned that that 43 beds, that facility part has been closed, so it would have to be recommissioned and working on the HVAC and other systems to ensure that that could be open. But with that, they could move the juvenile detention facility to the smaller portion, and then the 83 beds would be opened for another jail for adults. There's already a wall or barrier between the juveniles and adults, which is required by law. There might need to be some other entrance or exit to ensure that separation continues, and we'll review that with facilities as well. So with all of that, and we're up to 727 beds out of the recommended, just over 800 in 2050. Couple other notable items on this. So we haven't doing a space needs planning throughout the county, really looking at what is our space, are we utilizing it correctly? All the departments have been involved. I don't think there's anybody in the community, on the council, on staff that says our current jail is adequate, meaning it needs to be remodeled. We need to look at what services need to be provided, where should people be housed, what services should be provided onsite versus when they leave. So there needs to be some work. As part of this work study, there was a space identified in the lower floor of the jail, which houses our Sheriff's Office Administration. This is all preliminary, as nothing's been finalized, but we are looking at moving them to another location, another county building, which would free up that floor. Half of it could be used for courts and probation, and the other half could be built out as a temporary or additional permanent beds. I know initially, Facilities was looking at using it as, building it out as a temporary jail to have the ability to move current pods in the jail down there as they remodeled the jail upstairs. It may make more financial sense to use the juvenile facility for that purpose, because it's going to be a lot of money to build it and then to take it down. Or it could be that something that we look at for a long-term additional beds if needed. Like I said, we would have to look at the Jail Works Center, and there would have to be potentially some remodel there. What's also a large component of this is corrections staffing. You know, as they mentioned, the H pod is closed due to staffing. So we need to strategize. I know I've already been chatting with the unions, our HR department has. We need to partner with the Sheriff's Office. We need to get out in the colleges, community colleges, high schools, whatever we need to do to entice individuals to come work for corrections and have them partner with us and get out there. So that's going to be, I think we have the hardened facilities, we have the facilities and the bed capacity now and to grow in the near future, but we can't open unless we have staff. With that, before, I do see, just one final thing, I do see the smaller committee still being a part of this process and an important part of having those conversations about the remodel options, about who should be where, what services should be provided, what, like I said, whether it's onsite or when they are leaving the jail. Do we, what population do we put out the Jail Works Center? Luckily, the juvenile detention facility is so close to the courthouse, so the transportation is not as large of an issue as it would be as the Jail Works Center. So there's still a lot of key decisions and input that's important to get from these members as well. And maybe we can have them partner with our Law and Justice Committee, because they're also very interested in containing this conversation and moving this conversation forward, and not just conversation, but the actual work. So before I go into funding, I wanted to pause and see if there's any questions from council at this point.
Just one, Kathleen. I missed the number for the lower floor, where the Sheriff's Office Administration currently is located. If that were converted to half beds, about how many beds would that be?
Michelle, do you happen to have that number?
No, we have not. What we were hoping was that we could get about one pods worth of the jail beds in that space, so that we can move pod by pod down as we do the upstairs renovations. So I'm not exactly sure on how many are in each of the pods upstairs. But that's what we are hoping for.
At any rate, it would get you above that 727 number, right?
Yes, if the council wants to increase the jail beds by that number. And remember, this, the 850 to 880 beds is out to 2050. So that's not how many beds we have to have today. It's really estimated by population growth, potential, population growth. And I believe, and Mark, remind me if I'm misspeaking here, but I do believe over the last, was it five to seven years, our population in the jail has actually decreased. Is that correct, Mark, based on the information that you shared with me?
Yes, some of that, of course, is due to decisions that were made surrounding COVID. Yes, but we have shown a trend. And again, those are all based on discussions with the Law and Justice Community of who's being held and for what reasons. A lot of the pre-trial type things are not being held currently. So those are all discussions that are involved with this Law and Justice community, so.
And I can share too, that District Court, they have, they are on the leading edge on a lot of initiatives to help those who have committed crimes to, one, be held accountable, but, two, to reduce the chances of them recommitting. So they do have a lot of programs already in place, and they are summarizing all of those as well to be shared with the Law and Justice Group.
So, Madam Chair, and that's the topic, Kathleen, that I wanted to hit on, if there is any public listening to this conversation. This isn't about building a mega jail, you know, this isn't putting 1,000 beds there. This is, you know, scaling what we need as we need it and using the best, most efficient use of the space we already had, repurposing, hardening, remodeling. So the point you made about the juvenile justice, as well as what you just made, is really the crux of how many beds do we actually need today, 10 years from today, 20 years today? You know, we have many collaborative courts as, being seen as a best practice, getting people out of jail, getting them into program and monitoring them. The same way we're getting and moving and have successfully moved juveniles out of their detention. You know, you institutionalize children, you institutionalize people. So there's other programs in play, arrest diversion, community court, you know. So these are all best practices that are evolving, not only nationally, but here locally. Clark County is really doing a great job of looking at what will keep recidivism down, what will really help people from reoffending. And it's, it's not just separating them from society and jail. So the larger discussion also informs how many beds we need at any given time. So I want the public to know that we are doing really good things in the Law and Justice community here in Clark County. Clark County uses best practices to get people out of jail, to keep from putting them in jail, getting them the services they need. The holy grail is public safety, and certainly, all of this is done with the idea of providing the best public safety that we can in the community. So I, thanks for laying this out, but I wanted the public to know that we're just not talking about, you know, increasing our bed space so we can put more people in jail.
I have a comment as well, and it goes back about three months ago to when there was a town hall held, not by council, but by concerned citizens in the community who addressed the subject of property crime that was, from their perspective, unaddressed. And the Sheriff's Office and Prosecuting Attorney's Office, when they talked about it, said, of course, that they too were very concerned, and the problem was lack of jail space. And they came back to that point again and again and again. It's about the lack of jail space. And so hearing that resonate in my brain, I can't help but just give you a huge thank you, Kathleen, for putting this together, figuring it out, realizing where there is space that can be tapped for a little bit different use than the way it's being used now, whether that's empty or closed down or whatever. So I just can't say thank you enough. Now, admittedly, we all know we've got that next step to take, which is getting the people in the, working in the jail to make this something that is safe for all. But to do that is going to be great. Other comments from council?
Yes, Chair?
Yes, Counselor Lance?
Kathleen, I also want to thank you for this. I think that we've been knocking around a jail conversation for many years now. And with the CFAC's inability to come to a strong conclusion, and then this council's inability to really move it forward, I appreciate the close look that you took. And while there may be some folks who are, you know, looking for a new jail, we need to remember to balance what is desired with what can be achieved. And I really appreciate the practical approach that you took to really trying to assess where we have space and how we can try to accommodate the needs in our community. While it may be more complicated, it is a way to most efficiently and effectively use the resources we have, and I really appreciate that. And to make sure that we are paying attention to the things that we definitely do need to fix and improve. I mean, we all, I think everybody does agree that the jail is inadequate at best. I think that's kind for our needs right now. So this approach will actually help us potentially achieve the goal of improving jail facilities for both those who stay there and those who work there. I did want to mention that Counselor Bowerman brought up what the responses were in that town hall when, and the sheriff and the prosecuting attorney's office saying that the entire problem was lack of jail space. And unfortunately, that isn't really the full story. And I think we all know that, that at the beginning of the pandemic, the prosecuting attorney and the sheriff publicly stated and made agreements that they would reduce the number of people going into the jail. And it wasn't that the jail is full and there's not enough space, but there was an intentional reduction in order to make our inadequate jail facilities safer for all involved. That has, the number of people in the jail has been growing, but unfortunately, those statements that were made at that public forum that it's solely because of jail space were simply inaccurate. And we've been hearing that a lot. And I just, I know we've talked about it as a council, we've talked about it individually. There are a lot of factors going into our needs for law and justice in this community. And I think that at every opportunity, And I think that at every opportunity that we can be sure to clarify statements that may have been less accurate, that will be good for our community so that we can try to move forward productively on solving these problems.
Are there other, I'm sorry, Counselor Lentz?
Once, once again, I do just want to say Kathleen, I really appreciate the approach that you're taking. And I'm glad that it sounds like it's getting some traction. And hopefully, we can continue to work on our staffing issues, our funding issues, and now our jail space issues and make some real progress as we move forward. Thank you.
Are there other comments from council? I presume that after this great presentation, we're going to turn to the public safety sales tax and how the two are interrelated. Is that correct?
Yes, it'll be the third part of the conversation.
Ah, okay. What is the second part?
So, yes, so the second part. So first of all, I want to thank you guys for your patience with me and the community as we go through this process. I know we had conversations a couple of months ago to get this started. And there was an unfortunate tragedy with the Vancouver police officer, which delayed some of our key stakeholders to be available. And I'm, I have no idea how to run a jail. I'm not an expert on what's the best practice or anything. But what I do know how to do is ask questions. And I want to make sure that, you know, I also know our funding situation and make sure that we're moving forward what makes sense. But this, while I get to present this information, you know, data was already there and I had a lot of great conversations with people asking questions. So that is much appreciated. So I wanted to just discuss high level one-time funding options that the council has. I would anticipate remodels, and we're still working through this. But, you know, it kind of makes sense to look at the juvenile center first since they already have cells, it's already hardened there. It really is just getting that up to speed and reopen. But as we're looking at a remodel of the current jail or the jail work center, is to look at this in phases. I mean, obviously, we, we have that capacity to move people so that we can do pod by pod. But, you know, we can phase this over a year or two years. We do have actually time to do it since we have additional bed space that could be available once we get the staffing hired. I do want to also just state before I start talking about these one-time funding options that I'm meeting with some of the key leadership individuals in the county. Hopefully, next week, at the latest, it'll be the following week, to review all the county's capital projects that are on our radar so that we can have that comprehensive conversation while the jail is critical and it's very important. I don't want to lose sight of our other capital project needs. And so we will be reviewing those, prioritizing them, and trying to identify certain revenue funding to help support paying for those. And then we'll bring that back to council as well as a full conversation. So you're not looking at this in an isolated event. So with that said, some of the one-time funding options that we have is general fund revenue recovery. Again, not all of this money can be used, but, you know, as we may want to divert this to others. And I do have a couple of members of our finance team on here, Mark Gasway and Emily Setzig. So please feel free to jump in if I misspeak or if you want to add anything. For the general fund revenue recovery, that's about $10 million for three years. So that's up to $30 million that could be available. We do have repurpose ARPA funding. Some of this has already been set aside for the CJC and the Family Law Annex. If you remember, that lease is coming up in, I believe, 2023 or 2024.
Land 2024.
Thank you. So we have to find homes for those departments and we have to remodel. I think we're looking at the first floor for the Family Law Annex on the PSC. Thank you. And CJC, we're still trying to finalize where they could work probably within our building as well. But there's going to have to be some remodel. So taking out some of that funding, that leaves about $10 million in that repurpose ARPA funding. Capital improvements, the council originally set aside $10 million for capital improvements. We've already spent probably a million. A lot of this was due to our facilities because, as you know, our facilities haven't been kept up to, up to par over the years. So we're coming into some facility issues that they've been able to address recently. Again, we'll look at all of our capital projects and bring that back to the council as well. Starting in 2023, REIT I will also be available. And I believe, Emily, tell me if I'm saying this correctly, but I believe in the first three years, about $2 to $3 million potentially could be available. And then after that, it would be $7 to $8 million. And that's based on our current debt.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Emily. And then, of course, there's an option of revenue bond against the sales tax revenue as well. And what we're, there's a lot of work going on right now, trying to get costs just to get things up and running. This does not include staffing, it's not ongoing funding. But it is funding that we can look at phasing over, you know, over the years to intentionally have a schedule of what's going to happen this year, what's going to happen next year so that we're continuing to move forward and we have identified revenue sources. Finance team, and Michelle, is there anything on the one-time funding that I missed or you want to add?
No.
Okay, not hearing either one. So council, is there any questions on the one-time funding before we go into the ongoing potential, which would be tied to the public safety sales tax?
The one-time funding total, Kathleen, is what? And then how would that be probably apportioned in this project?
Yeah, those are the details we're still working out. I would have, if we add the 30 million, if we did the full amount for just the jail, 53 million approximately in the first year. Well, the third, that's taking the full 30 million over the three years. But again, before we, and I do believe the remodel is going to cost significantly less than building a brand-new jail to the scope that was previously discussed. But we need to look at all of our capital projects as well because we do have other capital projects and I want to make sure we're not losing sight of that. So that might reduce that amount for the jails specifically. Any other questions? Yeah, any other questions from council before we go on to the on, potential ongoing?
Kathleen, could I jump in and just add something real quick?
Of course.
So council, what we're trying to put before you is we're, we're trying to identify two types of funding, our one-time funding and our ongoing funding. And we're going to talk about the ongoing in a second. But we, we need to make sure that we match our one-time funding with our one-time funding requirements. And again, that's, that's the part that Michelle's working on, trying to determine what that is. It, right now, there's a lot of this, there's a lot of moving pieces. But we hope to be able to present at some point, once we have more information, the match of how we'll match the, the funding sources, the one-time sources with the one-time needs, and then schedule that out. Because as you've heard from Kathleen, we don't need all of this now. We, we need it over a period of time as these phases come into effect. So, you know, that's just, you know, something to remember. What we have now and what we'll need over time will, will develop. Those are, those are things that we're putting together, so.
Okay, staff, if you can pull up the spreadsheet, please. So I want to say this is a draft. Mark had put this together. Some numbers are good estimates, others are placeholders. So this, please do not, anybody who's watching this, this has not been vetted through our finance team yet. But what, I'll just do a high level and then I can let Mark kind of go over the details on this. But this is showing the 1/10th of 1% sales tax. I will say, in conversations with Mark, I did ask if the council wanted to do, say, 2/10ths for 10 years and then continue the 1/10th beyond that. We, that is an option. And the reason why I was asking is could we use some of this as well for one-time capital to help support any funding that we may not be able to get to through our already one-time funding options? So Mark, do you want to go into detail on how this is set up and what this means?
Sure. The, the main, the main message that this, or the story that this is trying to tell, this is what revenue would be available for an, in an ongoing basis. So we would be able to fund up to, you know, in 2023, about $6 million. And then down below that, we, there are certain projects that the council has prioritized. Clearly, one of the, the areas of focus that we want to pay out of this ongoing revenue is the body camera program. Some of these other are just suggestions based on discussions and ideas, you know, like we're having today about, well, what will the ongoing cost to operate these facilities as, as, you know, jail facilities? So again, these numbers, as Kathleen said, are just, you know, ideas and projections at this point. Once decisions are made of, well, we're going to, you know, do this stage first, then we can start putting in, you know, real numbers as far as staffing goes. So the, the two work kind of hand in hand. What we do know is what revenue will be available ongoing from a 1/10th. The other comment that Kathleen had about using a, a sales tax like this for one, one-time type projects, what that would entail is we, if the council decided, what we would do is have a revenue bond created, which would allow us to have the funding upfront or pay for one-time, you know, one-time expenditures through a bond. That is, it's, it's a little bit different than, you know, the, the ongoing formula here. And I have not included that. But it would certainly be an option if we find, once we do all of the work, that we just don't have enough one-time money over this phase of, of projects. That certainly would be an option for council to, to bring that money in and bond that money. So again, this is just something to talk about. It's a dynamic model. If, Rebecca, if you could scroll down. There's, there's a whole list of variables here that we can work with. There's, you know, different types of, you know, timeframes or, or, again, and, and I just want to reemphasize, this is very preliminary, very draft. There's nothing in here that is a determined number at this point. And so, you know, probably the best information that we have, you know, we have done a lot of research with the body camera situation. So some of those numbers are probably a little more firm. But again, this is an example for council. And, and what I would suggest as we move forward with different phases of the, of the facility side of things, then we can address this to see how we can match up the ongoing revenues with those phases of, of facility changes. So if you have any questions about this, please feel free to answer. Or I'm, I'm here to answer, so.
I have a question. I noticed that you've used 15 for the number of new corrections employees.
Just, yeah, just.
Just out of the air.
Yep.
Okay, I just kind of wondered how far that would go in terms of the new pod to be opened and, and the work to be done.
We, we just put that in as a placeholder. There's no, there's no rhyme or reason to those numbers at this point, so.
And I can, I can share, I did ask Chief Sample in the jail, how many deputies would you need to open H pod? And he, I believe he said 12. He had a much higher number for the jail work center that I'm not inclined to share because I want to ask some questions because we didn't have that many people before. So it could have been because of the different population that could be housed. And then we'll also get the number for the juvenile for those beds as well. And, and I do have to say also, you know, while this is additional FTE than what's already budgeted, and I know the council knows this. I have had a lot of good conversations with the corrections deputies, but they have not been fully staffed in their current FTE for years. I only went back four to five years and they're 18 to 20 below what is allocated to them now. And they've been that way for years. So it's, that is going, I mean, I, remodels are tough. The funding is going to be expensive and that's going to be hard. But for me, the true worry and concern is for our corrections deputies, both to get them staffed to where they need to right now and to, to be able, so that we can actually move forward with this in the future to open up more bed space.
Madam Chair, Mark, I had one question about, if you could just give us a little bit more detail on that overhead rate of 15%. But I did, I just wanted to briefly comment on what Kathleen just said because, you know, our HR department doesn't manage sheriff hiring and retention. The sheriff does that. And the fact that they have been understaffed for so long in many different areas is not a reflection on the county's HR, the council, or the county manager. It's how they manage their staff. So, you know, there are, I'm getting emails from constituents saying, why are you cutting the sheriff's budget? We haven't cut anybody's budget. So, I mean, as far as clarity and truthful comments out there, I, I appreciate you saying that you only look back five or six years, but it's, it's been going on for far longer than that. And now it's kind of at a point where, okay, well, we have to fix this. And so staffing is a huge issue at the jail and the, especially those sections that are unopened because of lack of staffing. I mean, we need to fill those positions first and foremost. Anyway, so can you just tell, touch on the 15% overhead?
Yeah. And I, I just put that in because anytime you add more staffing, if, if you make adjustments to existing staffing, I, I didn't make any changes. There's no variables for overhead. But typically, when you add more staffing, there's going to be other types of expenses that are associated with adding staff, and that's countywide. And so the 15% is about, it's probably an average county-wide overhead that we have. Each department is different. And again, these are just, you know, ideas of how these numbers come together. We'll get much more specific when we know, well, is it a, a corrections department? Is it a, you know, district court department? We can fine tune that. So that's just kind of an average number. And there is another component that I did include in this model. Again, just to make sure that we're thinking long-term, once those facilities are open, there is going to be a maintenance cost of maintaining those facilities. So there is a variable built into the model that, that talks about what will it take to continue to maintain those facilities? So we're trying to think big picture, you know, can we support these types of programs with, you know, the revenue that is being requested in, in this model, the 1/10th? And again, those are all questions that we'll continue to refine. But, you know, to make a statement that, you know, this sales tax would be able to provide funding for body cameras, for, you know, staffing as we reevaluate our jail situation. Right now, I look at that and, and I say, you know, yes, we could afford to do these things on an ongoing basis. So as new decisions are made, I'll update the model and I'll certainly come back and say, you know, yes or no, can we afford this? You know, what, what is it that we can afford or how, you know, how those things change, so.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Lentz?
Uh, thank you. Also, thanks again for this. I really appreciate the diligence and the growing detail on it. Question on timeline. If we are planning to go out to the voters in August, having information like this will be incredibly helpful. And I know that this is preliminary and it's a great preliminary step. As you continue to refine it, how are we doing, how are we going to be doing on getting the information more solid, getting it back to us, playing with it back and forth so that we can have this in a, in a timely way to share with the public so they are crystal clear on what our intents are for the funding we're asking them for?
All right, Kathleen, do you want me to speak to that or do you want to speak to that? Did you want to speak to that?
You can, you can start, and I can jump in.
Okay. So council, probably the most important thing for, you know, council to give staff direction on is what what is that phase one going to look like? And a lot of that will come from our facility side. Once we decide, you know, here's what we need to do first. And hopefully, you know, Michelle's been working on this for a little while, and I I know Michelle's on here, so I won't speak for you. But once we decide what that phase one will look like, then that starts to put things in place for, well, what's next? And what do we need to fund ongoing in that phase one? So so those kind of things, we think we can get to, you know, in in a fairly short period of time. And again, not putting any pressure on Michelle, I'll let her speak to that. But that's really the first step. What what will that phase one look like?
Yeah, and I think that'll just be a decision that'll have to be made of what we do want to do for the phase one, if it's juvenile versus the work center versus the correction center basement, because that will make a difference on on the numbers.
Could we please pop back up to the body cam information that you have tabulated? Thank you. So before Mark with Prop 10, we stopped on the spreadsheet, the intake of additional revenue for the the body cam program after a while and put it in reserve because that could carry us for many years into the future. I take it that that is not done now. Is that correct?
Correct. This model shows this as an ongoing funding source. That's and that's simply because we've added other other expense streams to it. You know, there's certainly, if if it's a desire of council that we want to put some kind of a, you know, reserve for this program, you know, we can build, I can build a model however you would like it to be built. If we are looking at doing, you know, ongoing programs, it's great to be able to match your revenue streams with your with your expenses. So that gives us a little bit of, I guess, comfort that we're not going to outspend the resources that we anticipate, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council?
Well, do you need the guidance right now? I mean, I, there are so many ways to go about this. I completely been thinking this way for the last couple of years and talking to the manager about it. And, you know, I think the low hanging fruit is the structure that's there that's being used for storage right now. You know, it's ridiculous to have built cells for juveniles that aren't there and just have stuff stacked up in those cells. So I would agree, that's the low hanging fruit. Let's clean it out. Let's do whatever remodeling is necessary. Let's get the staffing, whether temporary or otherwise, so we can then utilize all those beds. You know, the next next phase should be that work center because that'll increase increased bed spaces as well. All none of this can happen without staffing. And whether you hire a private temporary correctional officers until we can fill all the vacancies and and get up to full staffing, you know, all that has to be in parallel. You know, the one remodeling that the jail needs a new intake area, you know, it needs a new Sallyport, it needs a new, a new structure to handle the inflow of inmates. What they have now is wholly inadequate. That may depend entirely on what you do with the sheriff's office space and whether you make that into a pod on the ground floor. But some of these things can be happening at the same time. So I, you know, I would go after the juvenile facility and really look hard at the intake, what what the sheriff, what corrections needs for a new intake area and holding, temporary holding to move, you know, those detained through the process. So whatever the dollar amount is on that and the phasing, it is all depending on staffing and get keeping that up to, you know, to so that we can man these new facilities. So anyway, that's my guidance. I think I think you, Kathleen, you've got it well in hand in the space studies, looking at and informing this as well. We just need to start making decisions and moving it forward.
Chair?
Yes, Councilor Lentz?
Thank you. I think what I'd like to see is a recommendation from knowledgeable staff about how we should phase and move forward, knowing that you've got a lot of different things to consider, including the full space needs study for the entire county. And at the same time, we have to figure out what we're doing with the public sales, public safety sales tax requests. They're interrelated, though not necessarily dependent on each other, but getting these projects done, they are interdependent. What I don't want to see happen is the things that we have seen in the past where we under we hear that staff is waiting for council to give direction, council is waiting for staff to make a recommendation, and we end up missing some kind of a deadline. So what I'd love to see is for us to continue to move forward with the work that you're doing on nailing down more of the expenses and hopefully coming up with a recommended phasing strategy that we could review so that we can make the most informed decision possible. And at any point that you need the council input that you that it is asked for, I really appreciate how this has been going. I just want to make sure that it stays on track. And I feel that the best way to do that is to have recommendations come rather than asking us for our individual opinions. It will just continue to keep things disordered. Thank you.
One of the portions of the overall recommendation for the special committee beyond law and justice, but the a more specialized committee that is going to work with you, Kathleen, was that they report weekly to the the council, not necessarily long in duration, but to keep us up to speed. And that's a good time for there to be specifics that come from them on their recommendations or requests. And I think that will keep us on track for keeping the project moving, which is what we all want it to do, so that it can get onto the appropriate ballot. Does that sound doable?
Yes, I I know we already have some internal meetings scheduled to talk about potential options for the first phase. I want to be a little, I was thinking, I'm like, oh, we could bring this back next week with the option. But I also want to be mindful because Mark is actually on vacation today. And and he was kind enough to call in on his vacation. I would like him to take the rest of his time off this week. So I will, so with that said, if we have the information by next week, we'll bring it. If not, it will be the following week.
Well, and it doesn't even need to always include the financial, especially when Mark is on vacation, because you'll be getting input on what parts of the jail are recommended for overhaul along with the usage of the various portions that you've already identified today.
No, absolutely. But these these are my, the finance team, and I would say, and Michelle on this one, they're intimately involved with every discussion on this. That includes the capital piece, the the phasing, the because it's all intertwined together. So but we can, we'll provide updates, and I agree, we'll want to keep, make sure that this is continuing to move forward. And I'll look to both you, Chair, and Councilor Mebedi as the Chair of Law and Justice, because I know that we don't meet with them again for a month. And maybe there's, we can communicate out before that meeting on, you know, providing some of those details. But maybe there's a a subcommittee there that can join the other smaller committees so that we're not waiting for the monthly meeting. We need to, we need to keep moving this forward so that it's it's continuing.
And one other thing just to keep in mind is that the people who were involved with that original town hall about three months ago and formulating that have said, let us know when we can help. And there is an opportunity for communication with the public when that is needed. So that's another resource available to you.
If there's no other questions, I think this agenda item is probably concluded for today, unless council has any other feedback or questions.
I just want to say that at some point, whatever is needed from council to support the creativity in recruitment, successful recruitment of corrections officers, I would imagine that all of us are ready to be a part of that discussion. So when we can be helpful there, please let us know because that's something that is obviously critical.
Kathleen, if I may? We do not have as part of the proposed ordinance for May 3, a percentage within that draft document. Is that something that you would like to address or at another time?
It looked like Councilor Mebedi was going to speak. I don't want to.
So you said that you had asked Mark, and Mark, thanks for coming in on your vacation. Sorry about that. What a two tenths would look like? You know, I I think at the earliest point, we need to coalesce. Now Julie's not here again, so it's just the three of us. I mean, can we get kind of a pulse? You know, are you, are the other counselors looking at more than a tenth? Or will a tenth do it as far as moving forward? I mean, no matter what, it's going to be a hard pull. It's going to need all of the electeds throughout the county to be in agreement on it. So do we have figures for two tenths? I mean, we've already kind of roughly seen what each tenth does.
It looks like Rebecca, I did do a schedule as you requested, and it's put up on the screen right now. I I think Rebecca has it listed. This would be the the amount received by the county and the cities. And then it breaks down the cities by individual cities based on population. So that gives you a a pretty good indication of where the funding would go under each of the three tenths.
Yeah, so I, at this point, I would want to support a tenth in our resolution to go on to, you know, to barn that out to the to the cities and and get it on the ballot. But what is what is the council think as we, there's only three of us here today?
I have a question for Kathleen, and perhaps it's also for Mark. There'd been mention of the possibility of looking at asking for a shorter term two tenth in order to possibly fund capital needs if it turned out that we, the one time funding sources that we have were insufficient. I know that we're not at a place where you can confidently say one way or another. But again, on a timing question, I'm generally right now in favor of asking for the lowest amount possible that will meet our needs. And it, with what we know now, it appears that 1/10 will do that. But what's the trajectory for finding out if we can meet our needs with that amount or if it would make sense to ask for another tenth that has a sunset? I wouldn't want to take that off the table until we knew that we didn't need it.
Yeah, I I know we have a lot of work to do to figure out what that what that one time capital component is, hopefully over the next week or so, we can give you more information. I know that's my goal when I get back next week to try and have something before May 3. But right now, you're right, it's just, we just don't know, so.
Kathleen, do we yet have meetings scheduled with the cities?
A meeting cities?
Do we yet have meetings scheduled with the cities to talk about the funding that would be coming their way and how this works and so on?
No, so so I've talked to the city manager of Vancouver, and I know Lindsay has drafted a resolution for your review for the cities to adopt that would support. And I don't believe that's been reviewed in a public setting yet, and I don't know if Lindsay's received any feedback from individual counselors. So that piece is done. Once we get that solidified, then we can reach out to the cities and have that more detailed conversation and asking their council to publicly support this public safety sales tax. And I think because, and I don't, and I'm asking Lindsay and others on this for the decision for the 1/10 versus 2/10, because that hearing, I believe, is on May 3. So that would give us next week still to, or at least a couple days next week, to try to come up with some not as broad numbers and try to narrow it down as much as we can to at least see if there's a tipping point that if if it's recommended to go with the 2/10. We could have that conversation next week and still have that posted well in advance of the hearing.
I, Madam Chair, I just want to caution. So we we had this, we teed this up one time, and people said they were confused. We'll never really know. When you ask for a new tax, it's a hard pull. We need to keep this as straightforward and as simple as humanly possible. The other portion of this is public safety, and we're talking also about jails. Jails are very unpopular for funding world around, not just here in Clark County. So as soon as people know that jails are going to be involved, once again, you're going to get people to vote against it just when the word jail is mentioned. So I I'm just urging that let's keep this as simple as possible. If we do it two tenths, it'll sunset in 10 years. It sounds great. It sounds practical, but it's, it'll then very much complicate what the voter pamphlet will look like. And I think it'll really take a hit on the chances of of it actually succeeding.
Would you please describe, Kathleen, what occurs May 3? You said a hearing?
Yes, so that's a public hearing for the community to provide input on the ordinance that would be requested of council to put the sales tax on the ballot.
Additionally, we. Really, by May 3, there are some major markers that we do need to have in place, including a handle on that one time funding, having had the communications with the cities, and then knowing, are we going to strive for the the 1%? And, you know, if we've got those, the big issues under control as far as how that discussion with the public goes, we're going to be far ahead because, like has been stated, keeping it simple but also very clear so that the public knows what it is that they would be asked to pay sales tax for is critical.
So I've got, I don't know if this would help. I've got some preliminary numbers. Kathleen, as she mentioned earlier, had asked for a list of our capital related projects over the next 20 years. And based on the main facilities consist, condition assessment that was done in 2019, we are looking for our jail work center, our law enforcement center, which is the jail correction center building all the floors, and then also our juvenile center. We're looking at approximately $73 million over the next 20 years of just capital type maintenance projects that will need to happen in those buildings above and beyond the space planning and renovations to make more beds. So that gives you sort of a high level look of additional costs that we're going to have in the next 20 years above these costs we're talking about today.
And I know that there's an option, and I think Lindsay had mentioned this before, if the council's not ready for the May 3, there could be a special meeting after that date. Lindsay, can you remind me what the deadline is for the August ballot?
May 13.
May 13th.
So May 13th is regularly scheduled, but we could do a special meeting notice the following week.
You mentioned in the one-time funding, the repurposing of ARPA funds. Can there be additional ARPA funds used for the one-time part of the project?
I would have to, yeah, I would have to ask Mark because I think that funding was all the funding that was available for ARPA funding. Mark, do you have a response? Thank you.
Right now, we have committed about, about half of our ARPA funding to other areas. So of the 90, approximately 95 million, about half of that has already been committed, which leaves, and I would, I would use a number of about 40 million that's available for other purposes. The revenue recovery piece of that is one of the authorized, authorized purposes. And the reason why I would recommend we do as much revenue recovery as possible, simply bringing that back into general fund makes it more flexible. We certainly could earmark it for these capital-type projects, but it does allow flexibility. Over the next three years, we would be able to repurpose about $30 million, about 10 million a year. And that would leave about 10 million of other ARPA money that is certainly available, that has not been committed for other projects at this point for this purpose. So the, the total of those two items, the revenue recovery and the uncommitted ARPA funding is about 40 million.
And putting that together with the data that Michelle just shared with us, that could be very meaningful.
Absolutely.
This has been incredibly informative. Thank you all, and especially anyone who happens to be right now on vacation. Have fun the rest of the day, please.
You noticed the tie, right?
Yeah.
So Chair Bowerman, if it's okay with you, we'll, we'll reconvene next week and come back to council next week to solidify what council's desire is for the percentage on the ballot for your hearing.
Well, are we ready to move on?
We are, thank you.
I know we could talk about that for the rest of the day, but we won't. I am one, excuse me, 1.5 is the Camp Bonneville Citizens Advisory Group. And is this you Lindsay or who is going to present here?
For the record, Rocky Houston is here, the division manager. In attendance with me here in the chambers is Eric Harrison, who is the program manager for Camp Bonneville. So again, Rocky Houston, Division Manager, Parks and Lands Public Works. We have a few slides here to go over a quick update of the project. Next slide, please. Just provide you an overview of kind of the history of the project, update on the cleanup process, provide a proposal for an adjustment to the advisory council than what was presented last summer. And then provide, request any direction on that. Next slide, please. So in many things, we always close our eyes and view the future. So the vision, as I understand it, for Camp Bonneville was after the cleanup that this would be a 3,800-acre regional park that would provide passive recreation through 3,200 acres of it and 600 acres would be a more active recreation as outlined in the reuse plan that was developed back in the mid-'90s and then I think updated in the early 2000s. The colors on the map here, the green is the Central Valley and West Slopes area, which is where predominantly the developed area would be. The red area there is the closed-to-the-public, the central impact zone. So that is fenced off and not going to be part of public use. And the remainder is sort of that passive recreation, forest management area. Next slide. So to provide a big overview very quickly, four phases are in front of us. So phase zero is when it was owned, operated, and managed by the Army. So started in 1909, 1909, and went through 1995. And they primarily used it as a training facility, but it was used for many other things, including a prison camp during World War II. In the mid to late 1990s, started phase one with a pre-transfer feasibility and the transfer to, to county ownership. Phase two is the cleanup phase where we are currently today. And phase three is the master plan. And there's a, you can't see it, there'll be a future phase four, which would be development once we have a plan in place. But that's well in the future from us. I'll just go a little deeper into phase one and phase two. Next slide, please. So this is just the key milestones that were addressed, about 22 of them from 1995 to 2012 that went through the process with the federal government, DOD, and the county to look at the reuse plan, the transfer feasibility, which led to the prospective purchaser consent decree. That's a tongue twister, in May of 2012. And that sets the framework for what we're working on now, next slide, which is the cleanup. And so what I've highlighted here is the key nine things that have occurred, which is the starting of the remedial action of the cleanup and the no further actions issued by ecology throughout the last decade or two. And currently we are at that final phase where we're circling around the clean, finalization of the cleanup, next slide. Which, here's a quick, so we've, our government and our acronyms, I'm just going to say R-A-U. I think that's Remedial Action Unit. You see that most of those have been completed and we have got documentation saying that no further action is needed. The site water, groundwater is something that will potentially be ongoing for quite a while as we continue to monitor that. And the MAC or the munitions and explosives of concern are 100% complete. So most of that documentation has been forward. Weston, who was our contractor, has no longer on-site and has completed those actions. Now we're in that phase of confirming all that work's done. Next slide, please. So again, to reiterate is that the closeout actions is sort of the phase that we're getting, we're in where the groundwater monitoring will continue. The O&amp;M plan, which is also considered the institutional and engineering controls, has, we've gone out to an RFP last, last calendar year and have a contract ready to go. It just hasn't been moved forward for approval yet. And that would provide us that document. It'll take us about a year or so to go through that process to put those controls in place, that O&amp;M, which would tell us what we need to do to continue to ensure the site's safe for public use. We are in front of you today talking about the Citizen Advisory Group, which in the, in the past, we were looking at sort of doing concurrently, the master plan and this O&amp;M plan. And it's a bit, bit by, bigger bite than we have capacity to, to work on. As well as I think, I want to make sure that we have our cleanup, closeout completed before we move forward and start, start talking about the master plan and that reuse. So again, that's what we're looking to do is have this group review those prior actions, review those as we're working with ecology and answer questions and provide that advisement to, to the department as well as to council. And then finally, which will take several years, is the site-wide closeout. So the Department of Ecology will review all of their prior actions, all the, and decisions, our actions through, through our contractor and make that final decision to close out the cleanup phase. Next slide. So just to review, it was back in the summer of 2021, a recruitment went out to develop two advisory committees. One was a technical advisory committee, which was going to be made up of engineers, landscape architects, more technical people on sort of that pre-master plan elements, excuse me, and a policy advisory committee, which was going to be working on with neighbors and sort of those land use, how we were going to use that property from a different lens. Our recommendation to you today is to utilize that work in that recruitment where we've got 29 applicants, but to focus that on the review of the cleanup and the closeout, which is consistent with our, there's that word again, prospective purchaser consent decree. And really provide that citizen engagement on renewing the cleanup actions in that O&amp;M plan. As you may not know, this was established and it was stopped in 2011. And my understanding is that was partially due to no information really to be reviewing as well as there was no engagement. And we've had a renewed engagement from citizens on this as we're, to the finish line of the cleanup. Next slide, please. So this committee formation, we're looking at having seven residents on it. Again, looking to look at that prior 29, engage with them to see if there's still interest, utilize a rubric to identify a process to select those seven to bring forward to, to the county manager and then on to, to you for, for appointment. We'd also have a Parks Advisory Board member and a Planning Commission member. And staff and ecology staff would be ex-official members, so we'd be part of it, but more support in gathering and presenting information. The estimated duration today is about 12 to 18 months. That could extend out depending upon whether we want this committee to still be in place until the final closeout by ecology or just to review that planning effort. Again, that operation and maintenance plan is estimated to take about a year. The authority for this group would be advisory to provide recommendations to, to staff and to council, but have no decision-making authority. Next slide. So I just want to thank you and would like to gather information and direction as we move forward.
Council, do you have questions, comments?
My, my first and foremost comment is this has been an act of frustration over the last couple of years on Camp Bonneville. I've been advocating for a citizen advisory group of some kind for years since joining the council. So I really strongly encourage that we put that together as soon as possible and get them up and running. We will all benefit.
Chair?
Yes, Councilor Lance?
Yes, thank you. Rocky, thank you, everyone who's been working on this, thank you. I really appreciate the pullback and the slowdown on the direction for the, the citizen group and how you're thinking about finishing the cleanup and getting the O&amp;M plan and then talking about a master plan. I think that's crucially important. And there's been a lot of information that has been surfacing about making sure that the site is safe and that we are proper, properly finishing out the cleanup before we talk about the grand plan for what we want to do with it. Because we need to know how the site can be used before we talk about what we want to use it for. I very much support having the CAG, as you've, as you've described it here, both consistent with the original agreement and focusing on reviewing those cleanup actions and working together on reviewing the O&amp;M plan, I think is a great use for the people who we have in this community who are invested and skilled and able to provide input on that. I think the county will benefit greatly from having folks directly involved in that. And then as we move forward into what the master plan and use may be, that will be that much stronger as we move forward that way because of the careful work that will be done here. So I'm very supportive of this direction and thank you for it and look forward to hearing how, how it goes. So thank you.
I too am supportive. We all know that Camp Bonneville has so much input from so many people who care deeply about that area and their, and the neighbors in that area as well. And to have a clear pathway for their advice to staff is of utmost importance. So I too support this and thank you for getting it to where it, it looks like it is a very workable group. Is there any further input that you need from council today?
No, all this feedback has been great and we will move forward in reviewing and communicating to bring this back to you hopefully before June.
Very good, thank you so much. And now we are ready to move to new business. And that starts with a proclamation regarding Community Action Month for May 3rd. Is that Lindsay?
I'm happy to talk about this, sure. This is one that we have done previously. I believe we've done this one every year. So this is related to the Community Action Plan and Community Action Month and recognizing the work that is done on that behalf. So like I said, we've done this before, just making sure that there's no questions or concerns for moving this forward.
Questions or comments from council? Port?
Looks good. Okay, thank you. That was easy, huh? So next we looked for any councillor reports. Councillor Lance?
Yeah, thank you. Let's see, last week, C-Trans had two meetings. We had our regular board meeting and on Tuesday. And then on Friday morning, we also had a workshop, a retreat to look at longer-range planning. And the report is that went well. Chair, Chair Bowerman was there and it was, it was wonderful to have the board together for a longer period of time to talk more intensively and extensively about the, the projects that C-Trans is working on, including the currently underway Mill Plain Bus Rapid Transit and then the forthcoming Highway 99 Bus Rapid Transit. And also just to take a look at C-Trans 2030 Plan. I think that the best thing we can say about the C-Trans progress on the 2030 Plan is that they put it together in 2015 and have already accomplished most of the things within it. So the organization is going, going along very well and accomplishing the majority of its goals and moving forward. And we had a conversation about where we want to see C-Trans go in the future and that will be a continuing conversation. I have one request of the council, which is that I will be attending the Walkability Action Institute with some folks from county staff and other jurisdictions the first week of May. And that is an in-person institute to talk about walkability and mobility in all of our communities. Because that will be in person in Olympia, I will not be available during the day on the Tuesday that we have our 10:00 AM hearing scheduled. And I would request, especially knowing we have some, we're down one councillor, if it were possible to move the hearing to 6:00 PM that night, we get done at 5:00. So I would be able to attend that meeting virtually if the council were amenable to moving that hearing time on the 3rd, I believe it is, yes.
May 3rd?
Do you have any concerns about that movement, Gary? Counselor Medigi?
I'm abstaining from comment, and we have.
I would have no, no problem with that as far as my schedule is concerned. Why don't we work that through with staff today and get resolution on it so that we know what to post?
Thank you.
Any counselor report from you, Governor, Governor? I just, did I promote you, Gary?
Yeah, so.
Did you hear that I was calling you Governor Medigi?
That, we have, you know, we have our normally scheduled RTC meeting. So it will make, if you move it to Tuesday evening, it'll make it three hours or more of straight meeting. It really pressures the, it really turns upside down that, that day's schedule on the 3rd of May. We've already talked about law and justice and what we're, what we were discussing with the jail and other issues. I just want to highlight one thing from Echo. We have a lot going on there, but from the last presentation, one of the documents that received rave reviews from, especially from all the other city councilors, because it's a real education. Most people in the county have no idea the extent of what our county does for, for homeless funding. So there's a document now posted, and I'm not sure, Kathleen, where it ended up being posted. But pretty much everyone was in awe on the level of detail and the level of spending that's in the county right now. So I do want to highlight that and make sure it's prominently posted so the public can also take a look at what Vanessa and Michael generated at our last Echo meeting. Because it really, where you see the funding in the areas, it really tells you about all the level of effort that's going on across a vast variety of different homeless issues.
Kathleen, since Vanessa and Mike generated that, is it on their page where homelessness is discussed?
Seen it, so I will, I was just looking at their website. So they do have contact information and for responses, but I don't see the actual spreadsheet. But I will, I just started looking, so I'll find it and I can send out a link to you guys as well.
That would be a good addition there, where homelessness is discussed.
Super, thank you. That's all I really wanted to mention.
Okay, then let's move to work session requests. The Clean Water Commission Annual Report, Kathleen?
Yes, the Clean Water Commissioners and Justin Maynard, who's in our Public Works Department, are requesting a work session for about an hour to present the 2021 Annual Report and also review and approve the 2022 Work Plan with the council. They're hoping for the middle of May, but we will certainly look at schedules once council gives the okay and get that on the schedule.
It sounds overdue and good to have it now. Okay, Lindsay, on, are there, and I should have said, are there any other work session requests?
That's the only one for today.
Okay, thanks. And then Lindsay, on policy issues?
Yes, I just have one thing. I wanted to follow up with everybody regarding the Vancouver Lake RFPs and let you know, I've reached out to DNR and Ecology to see if they have staff that are available to review and score those proposals as part of our evaluation committee. And also working to see if somebody from our Clean Water Division also can take a look at that. But wanted to let you know that we're going to move forward with that, have a committee review, hopefully have a contract solidified within the next couple of weeks, and see if you have any questions or concerns about the proposals received or anything in terms of the, the timeline and the next steps.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Lindsay. We are now ready to move into executives. I'm sorry?
Excuse me, Chair, excuse me, Chair Bowerman, I apologize for interrupting, but I did want to clarify the executive session and ask that the, if it's possible to amend the agenda to reflect two items. The first one is the pending litigation that's currently listed. There is after action. And then in addition, I would like to add one pending litigation for five minutes, no after action.
And that's it? And then the collective bargaining continues as well, correct, Kathleen? Okay, so this totals 25 minutes, and thank you, Leslie. You have gone over what it will transpire there as far as after action. Council, meaning you, will be present, and this is authorized through RCWF 42.30.110, Section 1I. This is for 25 minutes. Let's jump into that executive session and we'll meet back here at 5 till noon. We begin. We have come out of executive sessions at this time. Is there a motion from Counselor Lance, please?
Yes, I move to approve the proposed settlement agreement and release of all claims relating to the lawsuit entitled Colf Construction LLC versus Cascade Bridge LLC at All versus Clark County, and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement on behalf of Clark County.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is passed. Thank you so much. This concludes our council time for Wednesday, April 20. The meeting is adjourned.